Recording in progress.
All righty. I'm calling the Village of Cross Plains Board of Trustees, Special Meeting of November twelfth, twenty twenty four. The order, roll call, please.
Rusty Brunner.
Here.
Rusty Borcker.
Yeah.
Rusty Borland.
Here.
Rusty Polakowski.
Here.
Rusty Calaboter. Rusty Braden. For. He's in the waiting.
Oh. There he is.
President Langwell.
Here. Stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance is to reply to the United States of America into the Republic for Justice and Long Edition Under God and the Disciple with the Breeding Justice Crown. All right, we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that's not duly noted on the agenda. Anybody here like to make a public statement? Anybody on the internet?
It doesn't look like.
All right, we'll go to general business. Number one, discussion and possible action regarding award of contract to Emmons and Oliver Resources Company for Brewery Creek Flood Mitigation Work.
Yep, and I can take this one. So this is for EOR. They are looking to do the Brewery Creek Flood Mitigation work. So if you recall, in April twenty four, we received just shy of three hundred thousand dollars from FEMA and WEM, so Wisconsin Emergency Management, through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Brewery Creek Flood Mitigation. So that would be the location for this project is across from the Creek Crossing Development. So that's across from Highway P. So this would be work for flood storage. So where we could put additional water. So these would be some very shallow ponds is kind of what they're proposing here. And so what EOR proposes to do is a lot of the design work. So they would do, they would do some surveys, they'd collect soil data, design a stream channel kind of restoration plan, and then coordinate any permitting that's required. So, so one thing too about this kind of proposal, so there are some permitting fees that initially we thought would be required. So sixteen thousand dollars for this. What they're, it's a map revision that would need to be, need to happen, but the DNR is actually offering to waive that. So we wouldn't have to pay that portion, which would be out of our grant budget. So this is all out of our grant budget. It's not any additional village dollars. So like I said, they're likely to remove that sixteen thousand dollars. So the funds would be available for the rest of the tasks. So what we're looking for tonight is just approval that EOR can do this work. So then they would be able to get started on this project. So they're estimating a cost of this thirty five thousand, five hundred dollars of the FEMA grant dollars. So that's all we're looking for tonight is just approval of this proposal so they can begin the work. Yeah, Cameron.
Does that sixteen come out of thirty five or has that already been subtracted?
Um, I think it has been subtracted already.
Okay. And then this, they wouldn't, they're just doing the planning, right?
Yep, this is just solely design work. Yep. So they wouldn't be actually doing the, the work. That would be another proposal that would have to be submitted.
Okay.
Yep.
We. I guess, is this like normal for this kind of thing? Or like, really, wouldn't the engineering people who were going to do the work do the design as well?
Not necessarily. I mean, we gave it to our village engineer and this was not in their scope of work. So this is a company that does this. And then what we would do, our engineering, once we have this, would help us write the documents for an RFP and then we'd put it out to bed and we'd go, you know, with the lowest one.
Right.
So, did you get ahold of Ryan today and talk?
Yeah, so there's gonna be an additional item on the regular board meeting. So at the end of the month, there'll be another item related to this project. So that'll have a resolution attached to it. This one is just approval of this contract.
Right, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve this presentation. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. The moved. All right. Okay, we're going to discuss regarding the twenty twenty five draft wage and benefit budget and supplement whole request. We will go A through G, but four, I just wanna do a little bit of setting the stage and just going over kind of where we're at and how we got here. So the main thing that I think which has been missing in our discussion is actual talking about taxpayers. I mean, I don't think in any of the budget discussions have we mentioned or talked about impact to taxpayers. So I think we need to keep that in mind. Number two, we need to keep in mind the overall health, financial health of the village. While we've touched on that a little bit, I think those are the two things that I think we also have to add and, and talk about. And before we get into this, I just wanna kinda remind you, we start the process in June, basically at the end of June, June twenty nine, twenty twenty four. I sent out a budget memo with eight goals to it. I just wanna go over it just to show you how much we've already accomplished through the process. So the first one was stay eligible for the expenditure restraint program. And that's for twenty twenty six. We're good. Okay, so that's taken care of. Number two, stay at the twenty twenty four level or lower using investment income to fund the operating budget. We're, we've done that. We're right at what we did last year. So we, we kept it level. Research and review options to pay off the TID. As you know, you passed, we made movement with milestone in the sense that we're gonna be paying off that commitment to it. Number four was reduced rates, sewer rates. We've done that. So we've achieved that. Number five was increase the base budget by one percent. That was done. Number six is the non-contract employees, an increase of three percent honoring the longevity raise first and adding cooler raises to reach the three percent. That's what we're kind of the issue tonight that we're working on. Number seven was increase the base pay for Mike and Elizabeth because of what they did last year. So that's in the budget right now, and I don't think there's been anybody concerned against that. And then eight capital budget should be priority one only. We were pretty close to achieving that. So we were close. So really, if you think about out of the eight, we have already completed six of the eight. One of them, I'll say we were, we were close. So we've got this last one to do. So and I think the reason I bring that up, one, is to say that we've made progress and we should be proud that we've done this because these were goals, very objective goals that are yes or no that we made. And also, I just wanted to let you know that a great deal of time and energy is put into, into this. I spent a lot of time in May and June looking at numbers and data and information, and I think we were pretty darn close on what we could achieve. So I just wanna keep that in mind when we talk about the last one, which is the, the increase in wage and benefit part. So I am going to turn this over to Carly and Bobby for background information. And then I've got a little bit for background information and we'll get right into the discussions. It's all yours.
Sure. So Bobby and I put together just a presentation that recaps what was done in twenty twenty three because I know there was a lot of confusion and I was learning all of this myself too. So just think a good way of, of doing that is to, to explain it myself. So we'll just kind of go through each slide here. So to begin, what was done for market study wages last year in twenty twenty three is several communities were selected as comparables. So they chose Middleton, Mount Torib, Verona, and Wanakee as comparables. It is my understanding that these communities were selected not because they're comparable in size necessarily or budget, but because employees were leaving Cross Plains to go to these communities. So the staff then targeted a seventy to eighty percent starting wage to average those communities' starting wages. So we didn't take the full amount of what they were offering, only seventy to eighty percent. And you can send me at any time if anybody has questions as well. So what they did is they took those numbers, that seventy to eighty percent, and made step one. So this was the starting point for new hires. So where, so that's where those market study wages kind of come into play. And then staff decided to develop a grade scale, which we'll talk about a little bit more on the next slide here, just to, so one is the lowest and ten is the highest. So each full-time position was assigned a different grade, so associated with the skills required, the education required for that particular position, experience level as well. So as we said before, new hires always would start then at that step one. And then depending on the grade, they would, they would just kind of move along the longevity steps, which are here as well. So those are those steps that are listed. And then I just listed out all of the positions here. So like we said, existing employees assigned a grade level based on their job title, skill level, and experience. So every position is listed within these slides. So then, this is where things get a little bit more tricky. So if an employee was working with the village for less than five years, they would start at step one. So from, you know, new hire to, to five years, they'd be at step one. Five to fifteen years, they would be at step two here. And then if more than fifteen years of service, then they would be at step three. So that's kind of how that worked. And then into the exceptions. So the minimum raise for any employee was three percent. So if they were below on the wage scale, if they were below three percent, we bumped them up to three percent. But because some employees were so far below their new placement on the wage scale, we implemented a seven thousand dollar cap, which I'll kind of show you in one of the, the benefits forms as well. So Mike and Elizabeth qualified for the seven thousand dollar bump, but were each asked to give a hundred and one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars of their seven hundred dollars or seven thousand, so that the administrator at that time was the highest paid employee. So that was the reason they donated that, that money there. And then supplemental budget forms were filled out for each employee. So this is an example of the supplemental budget request form that was filled out for every employee. So like we said, seven thousand dollar cap was implemented. So for instance, if we're looking at Catherine, her two thousand and twenty-three salary was forty-two thousand sixteen. And then her, if there was a three percent increase to her minimum, would have been just over forty-three thousand. And then the maximum increase would have been forty-nine thousand. So basically, because there was more than a seven thousand dollar difference, we capped it at seven thousand dollars. So then she ended up with the forty-nine thousand dollars. And the same happened with Mike as well. So I just kind of wanted to outline that. Is there anything you want to add on that, Bobby?
No.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I'm explaining everything right. Okay, thank you. All right. So then, just next, what's next, preparing the twenty twenty five budget, just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So there was a position grade policy and a longevity pay program policy that were adopted. Both of those were adopted by the village board in January of twenty twenty four. So the position grade policy placed every village position into one of ten grades and provided a salary range for each grade. And then the longevity pay program policy outlines the longevity scale in, in the compensation plan with one difference, the labeling of steps. And that's where I think a lot of confusion came from last meeting. So we're just hoping we can kind of clear that up. So the proposed staff wage scale had employees hired at step one, and then they max out at step ten. Whereas the approved longevity pay program policy started at step one and then maxed out at step nine. So that's where the difference in labeling happened. Anything you want to add there?
Nope, just that the percentages between each step and the time between each step are identical. Yeah, so label.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of why, I know I didn't catch it in January because I just checked like, oh, yeah, this, you know, everything else looked good. I didn't pay attention to the step one through nine versus one through ten.
Thanks. And then just, just a reminder of cost of living adjustments is, are generally increases to help pay for inflation and rising costs. And then longevity would be the compensation to recognize an employee's length of service. And then just levy limit review, just wanted to give a refresher on that too. So that was enacted in twenty, two thousand and five to provide the maximum amount local governments can implement as a property tax. So it's calculated using the prior year's levy increased by the percentage of net new construction by the preceding year. And just wanted to say that there's no penalty to a municipality for going up to their allowable property tax levy limit each year. In fact, according to the DOR, like you wouldn't even have to, you wouldn't be penalized unless you went up to five hundred dollars over the levy limit. And this is just like a form that we fill out. So every year we have to fill out a levy limit worksheet as a municipality. I'm just kind of showing that, you know, the way that this form gets filled out, there's not even a place to kind of put that buffer. There's not really a, a benefit to having a big space between where you end up with the levy. So just showing that there's not a place in the form to put that in as well.
So, so let's hold, hold back here.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the part I'm gonna disagree. There's a huge benefit in having a gap between the levy limit and your spending limit.
Okay, what would that be?
So let's, well, let's take a look at if we went up to the seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is being proposed, right?
Yeah.
Now we find out that we have a retirement that we wanna hire somebody to overlap. And I see that sixteen thousand, right?
It is.
So if we would pass the budget with only seven hundred and fifty, we would not be able to do that because we don't have the, the gap, the money to do it. We'd go over by more than five hundred.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So there is a huge disadvantage of going up to the levy limit. It ties you that you're not able to do other things during the year unless you wanna put cut somewhere else because it's a solid line.
Right.
The five hundred, that's the first I heard. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
But going up to the limit is a financial risk that you're taking. So I don't agree that it's okay to go up. There is a huge, that's three hundred and sixty-five days that ties us on what we can do.
That's fair. Yeah, absolutely. And that's kind of the end of the refresher portion. Any questions?
Well, not questions, but I, I, I think on some of your slides, those while they were in the plan, they weren't necessarily approved, especially that salary one. I think what, what
I'm just.
What was happening is we were double raising vertical and horizontal. I don't wanna go all over that because that was extremely confusing. But if you see how they're separated now from the grade system, has no steps in it, right? The grade system is a range. The longevity now has the steps. So longevity is not, the steps are not tied to salary. They're tied to how long you're there.
Right. And we understand that that's not in place. We're just showing that as this is how we came on with the market adjustments.
Well, that, it, it, and, and, and that's, I'm not sure it answers, but I, I've got the board here. So we, hopefully we will get there. So this is very similar to this. This is, and I wanna make sure everybody understands when I say it. So what she showed, because employee A just happens to be the same, you go across here and from our policy, as they stated, there was no, she's not, the three percent is not applicable, right? Because she's above that. So she's in step three. Step three is nine percent. That would have been this amount. But we ended up, as you're saying, going up to here. But then she only went to seven thousand, which is thirteen percent. Now here's where my concern was in the process. Things in red, we were not aware of. It jumped from here to here. All right, there was this number in there and then saying that can't go to that because it's over the seven thousand. So I just got some questions. So question one is, why, how'd you pick seven thousand as a maximum? Why not seventy-five hundred? Why not five thousand? Why not eight thousand? What was the reasoning and the justification of going seven thousand?
I think in, in department head, we talked about it and we had a range, like some people thought it should be ten, so I don't know. And I think that was just kind of a middle common ground. We all could agree.
Okay. All right. So when you did market, as you can see, they're diff, that was totally different. Everybody had a different market. What factors did you put into it to decide what the raise was by, for the market part of it?
So I think what maybe you're not understanding
Okay, help me.
Um, so do you pull up the chart, like the?
Which one?
That degree, right?
This one?
So we created this, right?
Oops, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, you created it, but I'm asking you how you created it.
Right, so step one was the seventy, eighty percent of our comps.
Okay.
And then, you know, step two is your, every step after is a longevity step.
So step one is eighty percent?
Yeah.
Oh, I love that.
So seventy to eighty or eighty?
Seventy, eighty.
Yes, but they, but they looked at, they looked at those municipalities.
Yeah, I understand.
And they found, and they found, you know, a group of people, you know, or, or positions. These are grade one jobs. And then they went seventy to eighty percent below that average between their market value to get to that.
Can you just, Paris, we'll go? Because that, that, that's the same that she had in here earlier.
So then that employee, we looked at her job title and then her, we determined what grade she would be based on our other, that thing, yep. And so it was four. She was a grade four. And so because she'd been here over fifteen years, she got, we looked at, you know, you go to grade four and then you go over on the chart to step three and that's the fifty-one thousand. So that would be what, you know, in a perfect world, we would have paid her. That would have been her market adjustment.
Okay, but again, this has, I'm trying to figure out how, you had longevity, you have her at step three. Right?
Yes.
And that's just six percent then? Well, how, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how the, I can't get the numbers to balance. That's why.
Right, that's because you're, we're, it's not taking her old wage and adding six or nine percent.
Yeah, it's, it's based on.
Okay, so you're saying, if, if, let's just forget how it is. So I'm using the nine percent and the thirteen percent to get there. So we, we're raised her twenty-two percent in one year. Is that what you're saying?
No, sixteen point six.
Okay, sixteen point six percent.
We did that with a lot of people, especially, especially the ones with the seven K cap.
So I think that's what you were trying to do is take their twenty twenty-three and add some percents. And that is not what we did. We put everybody on this chart. We found the grade they were in. And then depending on their longevity, we rewarded longer-term employees by putting them higher up on the scale.
Okay, so then if step one is, sorry, so if this year, are they at step four or are they at step three?
Uh, if we go on this one, they would all hit to move up a step, yes.
Well, I know they all move up. Our program, if you look at our policy that everybody has, said they were on step three, they should be going to step four.
Right. Well, that's like the, the labeling comes in differently then. Because on here, step one, so we have you know, an employee who was hired in twenty twenty-three. Here we put them on step one and they should get a step to step two for twenty twenty-five. But if we go on the policy, they're actually in between steps and they don't get a step raise at all until twenty twenty-six now because of the labeling difference.
Okay, so how we, okay, so how, as policymakers, how are we supposed to decide where we are? Are we following policy?
I guess at this point, we just, we need to decide what we're doing, right? If we wanna just stick with the policy, then a few people just don't get a step this year or relabel the steps in the policy. That is a decision that the board will have to decide.
It makes no sense for, to me to have step one as a rate wage. I've never seen that. Step one should be step one of the longevity process. See, and this, this doesn't say longevity. This is salary, and I know, because I know Michael brought it up. Clear, we didn't pass this.
I agree.
We did not pass this. All right, this was not passed.
I agree.
And, okay, so we're all agreed that while you're showing this, the grades and the longevity was actually rewritten by this policy. So by this body, so we could all understand it.
But we used this for the market adjustments.
Maybe you, maybe you thought, I, I couldn't tell you, that's not how I did. This is how I calculated it. And I brought it up, and this is the thing that is, I brought it up at two meetings. At two meetings, I brought up where I couldn't get the numbers to balance on the request, supplement request. No one said anything. No one absolutely said anything saying, hey, you're miscalculated or that's not true. It wasn't until I met with Bobby in March and she said, well, this is the mark, this part is the market adjustment part. We should have been shown on the supplement. It would have saved that heck of a lot of time because on these requests, show me on any of them where it shows step one. None of these. You have salaries?
Description, it tells you where we placed him on that scale. I think.
I guess I don't.
Well, no, it, well, it, it, it does say what grade, but I'm, yeah, and I'm using what the board passed for grade.
The board passed it till January. These were done in, like, yeah, these were done well before that policy was passed.
Okay.
All of those were an outcome. Remember that meeting where it was just you and me and then some department heads?
Yeah, well, that was, yes.
Right, so that was, I mean, I made this spreadsheet before that meeting. So I was able to like calculate the numbers and had, I had an understanding of the market stuff. So those didn't.
They didn't match.
No, they didn't match. They matched a hundred percent.
Well, this column, this column, yeah, these match, but from getting from here.
No, I, I, my spreadsheet, I mean, that's how I was able to tell you it was sixteen point six percent. I mean, it all worked out. I think, I mean, it's very complicated and I, I, you know, I think maybe it was hard to follow some details, but I was able to, okay, we took that employee for the market adjustment. We put them, forget about longevity, just for a second. We put them in grade four, okay?
Not on the range.
Uh, so well, hold on, the, no, with that, the range came after. We didn't have a range.
The range has been here ever since we did grades. It's now that.
Not when we were in this meeting where we negotiated where to put everyone. The, the ranges didn't exist then.
Well, when we, I don't remember talking about everybody in that meeting. There were three things uncovered. But anyways, go on. Well, okay, the, the grade has always had ranges.
Grade, grade four was, no, maybe, okay, it didn't, Jay, but that's, I mean, maybe we didn't pass something, but at least in this conversation and we're all. Maybe we didn't pass something, but at least in this conversation, and where all of these numbers came from, grade four was forty-eight and a half thousand. So that was where employee A here was supposed to be, but then we went and said, hey. How many years have they been here, and it was more than fifteen, so then they went, we went six percent. To put them in step three on top of that forty-eight thousand, forty-eight and a half thousand. That is this number.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
That, but but that delta.
And that's why I did the math.
Yeah, got you, and that's that's how the number came.
Alright, then, that that'll explain this, well then explain employee C.
Hold on, I need to figure out what that is.
Well, it's three percent, but they're in step two.
Hey, hold on, what is the three percent?
That's the minimum, because that's what they ended up taking. I'm gonna, I'm ready to guess that they had.
Grade nine, step two.
Yeah.
So this, this.
They're already at a high enough grade and their salary matched, but they didn't get. A giant bump because they were already high enough on their little matrix there. Right.
Yeah.
They just need a.
Some people, some people have big.
That person needed one, this person did not, that's why, and then we capped the market corrections like seven thousand dollars, which is why it didn't go. Above it.
Okay, so what we, just so I understand, in this process. We use a minimum, a maximum, the grade, and then. The salary somewhere in between the salary range of that, so we had four factors?
For for everything, we said, here's what they're getting today. Here's the ideal based on the market adjustment. And then now, if the these values, so here, is that three percent?
Oh, yeah, that's three percent.
Yeah, so that, so then that one just, or I'm sorry, it's less than.
That number should be higher.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No. It's seventy-nine, three percent of this is seventy-nine.
They were going, they were going from seventy-seven and a half, I'm doing a little rounding here, to seventy-nine, which was less than three percent. Due to the market adjustment, so then we went.
I thought they had a minimum of three percent.
Correct.
So we did do a minimum of three percent?
No, we we did, because the delta.
If we were following what we were trying to do, that employee would get less than a three percent raise.
Or or we had a, or we had a couple of situations where their their salary would went down. Based on the market adjustment, which we obviously didn't wanna do either, so in those cases, they got three percent.
Okay, so we used a number of factors here, we had a minimum and a maximum. And then everybody kinda had different numbers depending on where they were.
Depending on the market, yeah.
Okay, so, this year, where I said there is a maximum, a minimum of three percent. And you use a mix of different things, how is that any different than we did last year?
Minimum and a maximum with three percent?
Yeah, I I, right, my maximum, my minimum is three, is three percent, right? Right, right, but is that not the same process, you might not like the same, it's a lower number, but here they use. A number to tap out and go under. And they used a number of variables to get to the number they want, and that's no different than what is proposed. And the reason I'm saying that is that in some of the memos we got, is that. That was wrong, but yet they used it last year on the same, the same method.
Obviously, like, so last year was like a one-time adjustment, and then for this year, it's going forward following the policies that were.
Yeah, I I see that this is a market adjustment, and now we're talking about there being a raise.
Right, because, because after we discussed this and did the market, sorry. After we did the market adjustment, you came back and made a different grade thing, or like different positions are in grades, and then we did the longevity thing, which kind of. We passed those, and so those grades and steps sort of went into the background. And the new stuff then got passed, those two policies, you know?
Yeah. Alright, but, okay.
I I was like, that's what I'm saying, so then we went from there forward, like what you were saying, that was a market adjustment, and then. We passed those two other things that kinda sunsetted some of this stuff, like that whole, I mean, unless we're gonna use that as starting wage. You know, amounts, I don't know, well.
And I mean, we're like, right now, the school district is going through all of these same things, like we've just had a market adjustment where. I have colleagues who received huge percentage raises and other colleagues who didn't, because when they. When they looked at everyone's pay and realized some people were being paid far under what they should be, they got a bigger raise. Than other people, and I mean, there's people of the same position as me, but because of when we were hired, there were. We just found that we weren't being paid the right amount, and you can see all this, it's all public. And and there were, there were some people who got massive raises because they were paid so far under. Do you think that is something also that we need to be paying attention to, is that they're still looking at seventy to eighty percent? And that, that's how low we were paying them.
Well, what timeout here, so Sarah.
Yeah, go ahead.
If 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 you're comparing us to Middleton, who's five times, no, but that's what they're using. It's Middleton who's five times bigger than us, Verona, Wanakee, they're three times bigger than us. Mount Hobbs almost two, we will never be able to match a hundred percent.
Right, which is why they're at seventy to eighty, what I'm saying is. By the thirteen percent raise, that's just getting them to seventy to eighty percent of.
Okay, no, look at, look at your sign B, the document, get the document, get the document out.
Sign A or sign B?
Sign B.
Okay, that, okay.
Just, well, let's go through this, cause I was gonna bring it up anyways, because that's in one of the memo. That we have employees that are not, look at the percent of average starting salary, third column. We have people, we do have one that's at seventy-one point four percent, but we have others at a hundred and eight. And our goal is seventy to eighty.
Right.
So they're way over of that goal.
Of the starting.
Yeah, I understand that, but you haven't made any arguments, this is what we're using, right? By August first, you were supposed to bring, if there's comparisons that are different, then you should be bringing that, but right now. I'm looking at this, and we've achieved that goal in the, this thing of hitting seventy to eighty percent.
That's for starting.
I understand that, tell me what it is for someone.
Well, I don't know, I mean, you just pointed, you said at the top one here, I mean, obviously Mike has been here forever, so like, should he be making seventy to eighty percent of neighboring meetings, no.
Really?
A starting person and.
Mike, well, I'm saying Mike isn't starting, so he shouldn't be making seventy to eighty percent.
And what should he make here?
I I mean, he's been here for a very long time, has been climbing the longevity um stuff, I mean, he he didn't even get what he was supposed to get last year. Before.
But help me out here, so we have the person at Middleton that's making, should he make as much as Middleton if they're comparable?
Yes.
How many years of service?
So something Jerry said really stuck with me and when we were having these conversations, is that, you know, like. Especially, not every position, but some of the positions, right, you're you're following streets. It's the same if you're following the streets here, or you're following the streets in Wanakee, or following the streets in these other places. So we have to, like, even though we're smaller, that doesn't necessarily justify us paying half the salaries.
Well, no, half is not right, but there's an ability to pay.
Okay, wait, no.
That's why.
No, no, half isn't right, I wanna stick on this for a second, you're saying Mike should be at seventy to eighty percent.
I I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying this says we should start people at seventy to eighty percent.
Correct.
And we have that, there's been no data or anything else to show me what they should be. And that was the one reason for longevity, you get the natural increase, right? But tell me what it what it is, what percent of Middleton should he be making? When he's here five years, when he hears ten years, when he's fifteen?
I don't know where that date is, but I feel like at one of the board meetings, you guys did present. All like your findings from that, so we could go digging old packets to find that. I feel like it was one of the, because we had many, right, where Jerry.
Well, the one who did a really good job was Bill, and I'm I'm.
I wasn't even here for that, so I don't.
Right, and and I'll be sharing that, because it'll go, it'll show you, we've been, the grades have been having uh ranges for decades. It's not a new thing that we came up with, but anyways, but but that will also teach, also look at. What needs to be looked at, and the ability to pay has to be part of the discussion. Has to be, uh we all would like to be able to pay the same salaries of Middleton, we won't be able to do that. Even though you'd want to do that, it's almost impossible, we would never be able to afford to do that.
I understand, and I mean, there aren't that many people on this list that actually don't even know where side B came from here. That are over or at the hundred percent, see a couple, but what the average would be.
They're a lot better percent than they were.
Yeah, absolutely, that's why we took the big step last year, right?
Totally agree.
And I am agreeing with that. So, eh, but I just wanna clear it up, because some of the. Uh, memos that we got did not quite state that, and I think it has to be represented that we're there, so that. Okay, so the other thing, since I'm I'm just going to address some of the. Things that were talked about in in the memos. And one that has come up a couple times, and I think we need clarification, there's this. Understanding that the reason we bumped up the administrators. Salary and which took money from Elizabeth and Mike. Was because there was the chief making more than the administrator. And tha- that is not the case, while I agree with statements made that.
I was in the meetings, I.
I know you were, yeah, you were, you were bold.
Okay, so.
And what you guys are doing is putting results, now here's where it came in. I agree with it that it's not the staff's job to take care of contract employees. But in his contract, and I know I read this a number of times. Unless authorized by action of the village board, the annual salary. Of the employee will increase per the village board approved percent increase for all. Employees for the remainder of this contract, so this was from twenty-three on. Now, we had an employee, he's, he's down near the bottom of the seventy. And while you do not contract that, you do have an obligation to honor what his contract said. And if any other employee was at that low, they would have received a much higher than a three percent raise. Which got him to seventy-two percent. So the proposal was, that I brought in, was to increase it to six percent. And that got him up to around seventy-three, seventy-four percent, it was based on that, now. Um, if you remember what was proposed, I never proposed for Mike and Elizabeth to take it. Right, it was prorated across all twenty employees.
Uh, well, that was.
I don't remember that exactly.
I don't, I, what I recall, whether you you had thrown out a couple options, and I think I had some of them recorded maybe. Um, you had some of them that I think were blanket, and then you also had some and said like, hey, these seven K cap people. Are getting massive percentages, let's take from them, and I I just, I was. I was really baffled by that one, because they were the people who needed the market adjustment the most, and so when we got into that spiral, that was when Elizabeth. Had rec, like said, like, look, fine, take some from me and take some from Mike. The other thing that happened in that meeting is we did have some room to the levy limit, and and I think this was fine in the negotiations, but you had said. Hey, no, we've already approved X dollars, and I don't even remember what X was, I think it was one million four hundred and forty-eight thousand. We can't go a penny above that, so we have to work within those bounds to find a way to get a six percent increase over to the village administrator. I mean, that was, that was what we said in this room, and that was, that was what.
I think if you read the memo that Bobby wrote, it was, I said I would prefer that we don't. Increase the levy limit. That is correct, that was the goal, and that was, yes, and that's where it came in of. Prorating it over a number of of people. And then Elizabeth volunteered, and then Mike volunteered, so that's how that came about. And that has been recouped in in this budget, right? So I just wanna make sure, because if we're going, if if the argument. Was because the chief was making more than the administrator. And of course, I have four, three other trustees both with me on that. Then this year would be a piece of cake, cause there's more administrator, I mean, there's more department heads. Than just the chief over what our administrator is making, and I would never do that. Right, cause there's other factors when it comes into why people have salaries, there's a reason, so I just wanna make sure. That we have that clear understanding on that, and also what needs to. On there is that we should continue to follow the compensation, I believe what I've. Proposed in that recommendation follows this to the T. This does not speak to COLA at all. Alright, that is something that should come from the board, that is not part of. This compensation strategy, at all. Right, it's not in there, so, right now. I have honored the longevity with my recommendation, there isn't one person that's not getting their longevity. Which is stated in here. So I just wanna make sure where there's out there that we're not following this, I'm gonna disagree a hundred percent. That we are following this. And it's to the board to decide what it is, so I just wanna make sure that we have those things uh. Cleared up, and now the other thing that was brought up in one of them is the whole thing, and we have somehow on supplement. In the budget uh memo, it was clear that anything over that. Uh, those numbers should be on a supplement. The importance of that is, when we instituted this system. It has to be where everybody is totally transparent with it. Otherwise, we're gonna have to go back to going line by line and having a couple four-hour meeting. The whole idea of the supplement is to flag. Differences on the last budget, so we don't have to go through. Uh, line by line, we just focus on what is being increased. Now, we, I'm gonna bring this up in January, so I want everybody to think about, if you wanna continue with that, then we need to follow it. If not, we can go back to the old style, um but. It it it's confusing if we don't follow it, and it's not fair to everybody. Alright, that's all I have to say.
On that final note, is there, has there, is there something that hasn't been accounted for that like? You're expecting a supplemental request for this year that didn't happen?
Yes. The whole uh COLA should have been on, the increase of three point three percent should have been on a supplement. The budget, the budget memo said three percent, they put in for six point three percent, so there's three point three percent that. Should have been on a supplement.
Can I just make one little comment?
Sure.
Since I have to talk about this meeting, um, I just wanna remind everybody, the only reason my wage got adjusted. Was because I took over as management, so taking that responsibility can be transferred. Lastly, adjustment, otherwise that would not be the case. Well, I took on a extremely important role um from the administrator dating back all the way around.
Alrighty. Alright. I guess we did the twenty twenty-three recap. Alright, let's do uh B.
Wait, can I, so. I mean, I feel like we didn't really get at though, are we not talking about it?
Lot to do about that six point percent.
Oh, of course we are, that's, I I can't, that's in the, that's not part of the recap.
Okay, where is that?
Well, that's a good question. I don't see it on there, oh, okay, I just assumed it was one of the A through Gs.
Okay.
Uh, boy, that's a good question, I guess we'll, we should do it at the end. Because how we vote on B through G is gonna clearly have.
There's no way.
No, right, there's no way. No, right, there's no action.
Well, we are, I'm sorry, we did vote on the one thing. We could vote on, we can't vote on anything in here.
Yeah, nothing in two, right?
Right, right, right. But what, what I'm saying is I don't understand how you can talk about the health insurer, how you can talk about what we're gonna do with the six point three if we don't know what we're gonna do with the health insurance contribution rate, the health reimbursement agreement, these added uh trainings and added.
Yeah.
I have, it's gotta be at the end.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, right, they both will impact one another, right? Like, that's where I'm like.
Oh, yeah, you could, I guess you could.
But that's fine. Um, I think
I think it's more.
The only thing that I, I still was concerned about was the difference, the two different raises. Like, I feel like last time you were putting them all together and not giving, you were suggesting giving different COLA raises, and that was.
Well, that's.
I would never, like, I just, that seemed very strange to me, and I wanted to know what other people thought about that, because from my understanding of COLA raises, they've been just a raise that, a percentage that's applied to the pay scale, not individuals getting different COLA raises. So that's where I wasn't saying necessarily last time six percent, but what I was saying was give the longevity and then potentially adjust the COLA raise. Because my background on it is always that we don't get the COLA raise, but then your um, eh, your like longevity raises would be different at times.
And, and you're right, that is very correct on how it's mostly done, but I was using this system. Where they just pick and choose.
That was a one time.
I know it's a one time. How, how, okay, so if I say this is a one-time shot, is that okay then? It was a one-time shot.
I think them is, they're two very different things.
Well, of course they are.
Right.
They're very different. But is it, i- if we do, let's say we go with just longevity. And there's a person that doesn't get a, get anything for longevity. And we don't do a COLA, so they're gonna get nothing for a year?
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
No, that's why there needs to be a separate COLA, even if it's one percent. Like, you guys can choose what you want everyone to get a set percent, and then the longevity would be on top of that.
Okay, and.
Right. Well, I have, I'm gonna do Cameron, then Doug.
While we're discussing this, though, with the current steps everyone is in and the, how we worded, like, everyone's getting three percent on the longevity. No, no, okay.
That was how it was presented in October, but like, when I kind of went back and forth and realized that that's, not everyone will get a three percent longevity.
Some people might not just see that.
There are a few, there are a few spots in the the, the scale here, right, where there isn't it's here between a
No.
fifty-year, seventy-year, ninety-year.
Can I?
Right.
The reason being is because when we enacted the longevity plan in January, we said we're placing all employees into step one.
Correct.
So what that meant was that an employee who was hired in twenty twenty-three was initially hired into step one without even having the one-year service. So this year they can't go to step two, because they only have one year of service now.
Right.
So their longevity would be zero, because they don't qualify for the second step until they've completed their second year. And there are five employees, I believe, four or five, right? Okay, maybe it's four in the house.
So I think one of those people.
Was wrong, right? I think there are four that were hired in twenty twenty-three who wouldn't be getting any longevity.
But the people who have been here, um, not to, but I'll, Bobby, I'll pick on you.
Yeah.
You, you were put in the longevity two.
Yeah.
So like, you should be moving
to three.
To three with, with that three percent. So the only people, well, and, and then the maximum would be for the, again, the people who were here first would be in step three. They are moving to four, which is three percent.
Which is, four is two percent. Step four is two percent.
Okay. And, okay, so there's a couple two percents. There's a couple zeros because of when they were hired early.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of longtime employees were gonna be a two percent, because they were placed in the three and one October fifteen years, it's gonna, wouldn't be a two percent longevity. But then those employees, what if they stay up? Get longevity raises for the next five years, because they have only the.
I'm sorry, God, go ahead.
That's fine. Many, many private companies do miss a cost of living increase. A lot of them will do, you just have a wage pool, a raise pool, a percentage of sales or whatever, and they budget it for it. Some of the times it's called merit pay, sometimes it's called, you know, whatever. Longevity is a term too, um, but most private companies have a pool of money. It's not just whatever the market would say, or whatever you want to pay people. I mean, what we want to do is be fair, and um there's been inflation and a lot of other things, that's what the cost of living is supposed to address. Um, I feel strongly about taking a positive step last year, and I'm a little I guess, concerned how it's, it's coming, uh, coming out and communicating now that I, I think we're doing a good job, but I think we're missing some key pieces. Um, the, the biggest one is wage isn't the only compensation. Benefits is a huge compensation, and uh benefits are something that typically public employees have had better benefits, whatever it's all in terms. Tired and sick of days, you know, I, I personally haven't been able to um, roll over more than forty dollars at any time, and I've, I've never had this job since the same time. I'm just using it as an example that people leave and go jobs for many, many reasons. Uh, most HR executives would say people quit their boss, or quit, quit their direct manager, that's the number one reason people certainly people will leave for better money than that money. Um, I also think we're investing in the facilities. I think, you know, spool moving is gonna be a pretty impressive thing, but you know, what we're trying to build is, is teamwork and a bit solid staff, which we have. And I thought we took an adjustment to improve their pay last year, and I think as we continue, um, they give some other obstacles, we need some other obstacles given the nice place to work. It's all a part of the package of people. Whether it's called longevity or or people are just gonna look and see what their goal is, and we wanted to get their goal. I think maybe we're overcomplicated more.
Right. So I, I like going then you, my vote. So I asked you, Bobby, to fill this stuff in, and everything I have besides Elizabeth and um, Mike, which are gonna be higher, because we're giving them an extra six point three percent plus four. That's not correct?
Uh, no, it is not.
Okay.
Because some of them will be like five point three. If we did a three point two percent. You know, so some are, are getting not a percentage or three percent.
So, right. I, I'm, I'm guessing the six point three percent is because you're taking a raise and then multiplying that up. Uh, you're taking the longevity, then multiplying the pool, and that comes out to a six point three, instead of just combining the two.
They should be added, I would think.
I would think so too, but anyway, this is what I, well, I was given, so, okay.
They, yeah, they should be added together, so you compound them. It does add a little bit more, I mean, it does add to salary, um.
That's the.
That was, yeah, one of the things that. So I did Bobby had given me a spreadsheet sort of, um, how she had, excuse me, done her longevity with the COLA. And I just sort of threw in some numbers and kind of projected out a few years into the future, knowing now where, when people start year, so I could see like what percentage longevity they would get like as it goes out. And um just, and I used a two and a half percent COLA, just because that's just what I picked. I can switch it to three point two. But like, this year, across with the step raises being corrected for the people who would get no step raises in here, you have about twenty thousand dollars in step raises and twenty-eight thousand dollar in COLA raises, is what would happen with staff. Then when you go out to the next year for future planning, it turns into about twenty-nine thousand for step, twenty-nine for COLA, next year twenty-six thousand step, thirty for COLA. We actually get into a pattern of, of, it's close to this year, it's uh, fifty thousand, then we get into a sixty-sixties, and then the next year it drops to thirteen thousand for longevity, but COLA is thirty-two, because that specific year have a lot of people who are going to lower percentages, people are starting, because it starts to get to bouncy then, like now everyone's receiving one, it's intense. So it's just a forward projection on what happens in terms of these wages if we wanna follow a longevity and the COLA come by. It says future budget projections and future salary.
So what do you have for this year for total between the two?
For the total between the two, forty-eight thousand dollars? Okay, maybe my math is off, but the numbers I got from Bobby, this year would be seventy-two thousand. That's because I think she's applying, I can apply a three point two percent COLA, which would raise it, I think that's what the three point two. And I think you're applying three percent to everybody.
Right, yes. Yeah.
So you think there's a thirty thousand dollars difference? That, that doesn't seem like that would really add up.
Yeah, because your spreadsheet was based on the budget we gave them on twelve for, in October. The numbers that you wanted was based on that.
Yeah, based on six point three percent.
And like, Mike and I were working back and forth and found some corrections, especially.
Enough to save thirty thousand?
Well, moving COLA from three point two, or two point five to three point two, moved it from twenty-eight thousand to thirty-six thousand.
Oh, you were doing two point five?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were talking three.
So if I go three point two COLA, and now I'm at fifty-six, and if you threw here, she had, I mean, she had people who had been here for over um fifteen years, longer-term employees, had a great boost down step raise, which should have been two percent, because they're moving into step four. And so multiple, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people went from three to two, and then I have five people that went from a three percent to a zero, because they're the ones that, okay, were given step one, and they are in that.
At the beginning, yeah.
Or they've been here for one year, then they've been here for two, so man, so a bunch of those went to zero step raise, so it.
Can you send me those current numbers that you guys worked on? I'd like to see the actual numbers. You don't have to do it now.
Right, I was gonna say, I'm gonna rework in that, like, I combined, um.
Do you want me to send you my spreadsheet?
And I'll just verify your numbers.
Yeah, just look at what I did, and see if I did it right, and.
Because I think you and I are on the same page now, so I.
With the steps?
Yeah.
We're doing it like how we're talking with the plan and.
Yeah.
But that, and I think that's what I was getting, because when you were talking about the pool of money, I mean, of course public areas only have a certain amount of money also, so that's where you can kind of adjust some of those percentages based on what we have, how much money we have. I mean, you can.
Well, we could reduce the COLA to eight percent, and, you know, doing that, it would be a saving of it goes from thirty-five thousand to twenty-two and a half. The thirteen thousand dollar savings is reducing this year's COLA by one point two percent.
When you posted this public notice, what budget are we using?
Uh, the, the October one.
So the six point three or six point two?
Because that had to be posted, be like, so many days before our.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to know which one we were telling the public.
Got that out of the newspaper.
Yeah.
Probably got touched in newspaper in eighteen years, Jay.
Don't know what to tell you guys.
I was just use the most recent budget we provided.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so for taxpayers, that's probably your worst-case scenario.
Okay. Alright, so I'll wait, I running for healthcare then?
That, that kind of thing, and then just work. I think when we, obviously, there's no decisions to that and stuff, so we just need to kind of think about COLA longevity before our next meeting. Is that where we'll?
Yeah.
I need to know what numbers to present, you know.
Well, we'll, we'll talk a little bit, but I think we gotta go through all this and then circle back, because
Sounds good.
there's only so much out there. I will also ask, does anybody else want the spreadsheet? To see like what I did.
I'll send it to you. You can send it to, I mean, B C C, everybody's.
Right, well, that's why, that's why they don't wanna start sending it like out like that, but see, I'll send it.
I guess I'll just double-check your number.
Yeah, and then, yeah, no, I'd find, send it to her, and then she can look at everything, and then send it out to all of us. So we're all, this was just your spreadsheet that I, so we're all talking about the same thing, yeah. Alright, so we're at health insurance contribution rate. Is this back to what you filled us in on last month of redoing how we do it? Because I thought we had agreed, we weren't.
Apparently, I weren't both, I don't think we weren't here, so she put it on the agenda, and I was like, oh, those don't need to be on there, so I think they're.
Yeah, I, I just copied what was discussed.
Okay. So B and C, we've already discussed, and we're moving them on to another year.
Yes.
Is that correct? I, I don't wanna speak for people, I'm just trying to understand.
I guess does the board have any? Would you like to discuss this this year?
I, I think it's worth a little discussion, sorry, my cloud.
No, no, you go for it.
I, I think it's worth a little discussion, again, we're not taking any action. I mean, I ju, I mean, we've had at least one employee leave because of the changes in, in health insurance costs. You know, I do feel bad about that. I do think this is something we should look at. Um, I just, you know, with but you're right, we gotta figure, we gotta figure out the, there's like a weird chicken neck in here too, because figuring out the longevity plus COLA. You know, like, is there an extra sixteen dollars?
I, 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 I guess my feeling is we, we should pay for insurance up to the eighty-eight percent, right? A lot of communities just have one uh, one insurance carrier. I believe Sun Prairie only has one, right?
Yep.
They're not the same.
Well, right, oh, get off of it, because, but that's a benefit to have multiple plans. Now, you're speaking of one that went up thirty-nine percent. If we do what this is proposing, that's gonna really jack out. If you have a thirty-nine percent increase, the others are nine percent, we're gonna be paying somewhere in between now.
Right.
And to me, I don't think the taxpayers should do that. We should provide health insurance, which we do, and it should be the lowest cost. If people wanna pay more for a higher cost, that's fine, but that should be a preference on them and not the taxpayers. So I, I'm not gonna be supportive, because that could be a huge increase in dollars. I couldn't really figure this out. Is it an extra hundred thousand? To do it that way, I'm trying to range.
Sixteen.
It was an extra sixteen, that was the supplementary amount. They were saying. Oh, oh, the new, okay, I was looking at your uh, little uh.
Memo.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Oh, yeah, that's in there too. So on health insurance premium piece, our village costs are going up now, or something.
Correct.
Alright, any more discussion on that?
I mean, I, so with how we were talking, this was something that staff was proposing, but before we got posted the levy, is that correct?
Yeah, this is, yeah, something we've been working out throughout the year.
So are you guys, you know, when we say that we're talking about COLA, would you rather have COLA increases, or would you rather have the health insurance? See, that's, it comes down to questions like that.
And I think depending on what staff, I'm really asking you to do it. Yeah, that's not, we have not come up with an agreement on what would be, what would be our, is it?
Gotcha.
And then we also had that Delta Dental um Insurance request as well. And I, I think that was another one that we had talked about putting on hold.
Is that under here, C is the health reimbursement agreement?
Yeah. So we'll put that on hold unless there's any discussion on that one at all. Um, and then we also kept the two um supplemental requests for the two staff members, um, Ray Darrow and Jeff Kitzimbal for their additional um the proposed additional salary, um, just because of the additional responsibilities that they've had, so just kept those in here as well for discussion.
Because I think depending on, I think both of those would be eligible for a three percent longevity, so then depending if you know, we did a, a COLA on top of that, they might actually already be over the proposed new amount. So this might be silly, depending on.
Well, C and I, I guess that's where I'm gonna probably surprise people, but I would think they would get this, but I'm not agreeing that um the twenty-five hundred is appropriate, but for a skill set that saves us money, I would. But for a skill set that saves us money, I would think that their base should be increased five hundred to a thousand dollars. Outside of everything else, I, I, I think they have, especially, and the other one would be uh very similar because he's now uh a wastewater treatment backup or a person can take off and there's someone there. With the new staff coming in, I, I still think, I would still like to consider giving these people some type of increase in base, I don't uh agree with the twenty five hundred dollar amount. But I certainly agree with potentially um the first one, uh five hundred dollars and the second one about a thousand bucks, that's where I would, would be. Um, again, we'll have to see if we can afford, but I don't wanna take those off the table because I think that's the direction we should be going is paying people that bring extra skill sets to the job and, quite frankly, save us money.
Well, I definitely agree with that, um. So this is a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, there are.
Well, yeah, cuz looking at the spreadsheet, one of them is getting step raised, but one was hired in twenty twenty three, so isn't going to be.
Oh.
Is, cuz it kinda was updating this and I was like.
But, but even besides that, I, if, if we really. They're bringing an asset to us, they're saving, with us being able to do some of that work now with staff instead of contracting out.
Right, it's.
So when they say they're like a four point five.
Well, well, then you just give them just a wage adjustment, like you, like how, like in this year's budget. You know, Mike and all of them are getting that, that back, you just say, this is a wage adjustment for increasing these, you get an extra fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars each, and it's just right on there, then everything else just continues on, you know, or whatever the amount.
They would give their longevity a call.
If they do or if they don't.
To increase their base. And if you looked at the big picture within their range, they're moving up their range because they're adding a skill set. Which, when you look at grade, that, it talks about that. So I like to leave these on, on the table for sure.
Yeah, definitely.
No.
Yeah.
Um, so this must have been something that came up between last.
I don't know, you know.
The additional, so these were for um public facilities for the retirements that are upcoming. Um, so we propose these amounts um to cover. Um, so for instance, this, this first one is for um an employee that's retiring as of January twelfth. So we're proposing um some overlap for training if possible. Um, if we're able to obviously get someone to, to be hired in these positions. Um, and then the second is for the director as well, um, to, to. So this would be as of January one through Jerry's retirement, which would be around March nineteenth. So we just wanted those to be considered as well because those will affect the twenty twenty five budget.
And we are proposing to not pay those from the levy, so it would not be added to the levy, but instead be paid from fund balance. Um, particularly uh through October, our interest income is over two hundred thousand dollars more than we budgeted for. So again, we're gonna add a huge amount to our fund balance this year, and I think that we should use that money to take this overlap in training.
For um the first, for the first one, right, the public facilities one, is that what?
Both of them, they're both will be paid from fund balance, so we're not levying for this, these amounts.
So, the first one, I'm finding the second, uh, I know we talked about it at staff.
Yeah, and we just wanted to put something together.
Started January first, I mean, are we even gonna have someone on board by then?
Hypothetical.
If, if someone wasn't placed January first, this is wages.
The maximum amount we would pay.
For free.
Which?
And if we didn't hire him till February first, you know, we take him, you know.
Give them a position, I mean, I mean. Yeah, we, we were gonna want as much.
Well, I understand that, I, but I was part of the discussion and we haven't even posted it yet. Unless.
Right, I think it would be unlikely someone would be.
And we're in holiday season, it's really hard to.
Think applications are gonna flood.
We can push that to February first, that's fine.
They gotta quit their job, they gotta get, you know what I'm saying, so I'm just trying to.
Oh, yeah, we just threw this in here, we could say February one, we could say.
No, no, I don't care what it's, uh, I, I'm not so, I'm, I'm just trying to get, understand the finances of it.
Sure.
So, um. This, you're, you're gonna put it on the books as twenty twenty five, but not in the budget. And you're just gonna pay for it out of fund balance, how does that not go against? Help me expl- explain how that works.
Yeah, so it'll be in the expenses, so we'll add extra in expenditures. But instead of, like, the revenue part of that will just be fund balance. So like the cash to pay for it isn't tax money.
It's basically, yeah, I understand from the tax part, but I don't under- I thought from the spending part, it's your expenses, it's. How that gets paid for is not.
The levy is your revenue.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the levy is just the maximum that we can tax the taxpayer, so. Like when you were talking about, and if we don't have the money, we do a budget amount, we can amend the budget at the end of the year and be like, oh, we wanna spend an extra two, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we just take it out of the general fund. It doesn't affect our tax link, we've already levy for the year, but we can raise the amount that we wanna spend by taking from the general fund, I mean, right now, our general fund is seven hundred, eight hundred million. We could, we could raise our budget by a million dollars, we're gonna general fund down to nothing if we wanted to, and it actually, we didn't change, that's what you say. We have a general fund that this could be spent from. It's like the interest income in the budget, it's basically used to pay for this. It, it'd be like bumping that interest income up to seventy five thousand dollars.
I'm understanding that part of it. But, again, when I read the expenditure restraint program. That is tied to expenditures. Right, am I?
Yeah.
I mean, it's simple, the land, I guess, I guess I'm assuming that. So help me, how does that apply to this? Isn't that an expense? Doesn't really matter the revenue, it's the expense, right?
For the expenditure restraint is the expense, yes. So if we add another, even if we round it up to forty. We still qualify for expenditure restraint, we still have a whole percent we could add to expenses.
Okay, I just, I just wanna make sure we stay there because, otherwise next year, we gotta come up with eighty to ninety grand. Whatever we're getting.
Yeah, so we would still qualify for expenditure restraint, adding these expenses.
Okay.
So then, thanks for going, so then for expenditure restraint, then do you submit the amount of expenses that the village spent at the end of the year? No, it's budget.
Budget to budget.
Like a budget at the end of the year, so they take twenty four, your budget of, of twenty twenty four, I guess.
Yeah, twenty twenty four, they said you can multiply it for three point two percent for inflation. And then sixty percent of the percent of your new construction in twenty twenty three. That's how they did it, and if the numbers are right, that with a maximum of two percent, so this for twenty twenty, what we have to stay in, so we're qualified for twenty twenty six, is we have to stay within four point seven percent.
And that's the expenditure over twenty twenty four that we can put into twenty twenty five budgets?
No, you're always a year ahead, we've already earned the money for twenty twenty five from the twenty twenty four.
Budget, alright, but even though twenty twenty four isn't done yet.
It doesn't matter, it's what you budgeted.
Oh, I get what you're saying, okay.
So that's why I was asking, is it budgeted or how it work? Yeah, yeah, I didn't know if it was going in and then we're just taking money out and it's not gonna show up as an expense. I'm trying to figure out what it is showing up.
Budget the expense, yes, and we'll still qualify for expenditure.
You see what that's, I just wanna make sure we don't lose that goal, cuz we're there. Cuz that, again, what are we getting this year, eighty six thousand, ninety thousand, something like that? Yeah, it's a big chunk of money to have, if we lose that, to make up.
Different question than that, with people retiring, you budgeted all of that, some of that? Cuz we wanted to get the expenditure constraint, so is that just a guess? Terms of the budget with.
We just assume these two people are gonna retire, so like for twenty twenty four, we had budgeted two or three people to retire and nobody did. I mean, so don't know, but. So holidays are coming.
Right, so those were expenses.
Right.
Were never used.
Right.
Right, and then they just.
So that money will carry over and we'll just pay for those, cuz those people that were, we thought would retire this.
So then you don't have any retirement expenses in twenty twenty five, or is it?
Yeah, cuz there's people retired that we still order pay health insurance, so that's still there, but that's still, that's still there. But what we did is we, we budget for what we think, and if not, and remember, we did the policy that it's there. And if it's not used, it carries over to the next year, then we can reduce what we need to put into it.
No, I mean, I understand that, but it's, uh, it's interesting. Not budget, not only give it to retirement and save your expenses, like the budget, the expenditure restraint is paid out of fund balance.
I, I, like, there's, there's a lot of rules there and it's the internal revenue, so I wouldn't mess around with them too much, they got a lot of databases and I'm guessing if people manipulate the system, they catch it.
Well, I'm just saying, with all, like, if you have guaranteed expenses like health, cuz of people that have retired. You don't have to forward plan for people retiring, if they just do, you just pay it out of fund balance and you can make your expenditure go down then, take it out of your budget. Re-sue it up, you understand what I'm saying?
That's not, yeah, it's not a long term fix, though, you wanna get it in, but anyways.
One thing we did discuss tonight, I'm not even sure we can discuss it, cuz it's not listed, but um is kind of, I guess, a safe amount to have for like to the levy limit, because when you asked that question in the last meeting, I mean, we were all over the board on what that number should be. And so I was hoping for like a, here are the situations where you need that buffer.
Well, I think we just talked about it tonight, actually.
Right.
Yeah, this would be an example, um, think of whatever would come up, let's say, uh. Uh, there's some mandate that, let's say there's a mandate that says now villages of four thousand have to have uh another officer. And we'd have to supply, anything that would cost us of, of an operating cost.
Which primarily would be like.
Right, and, and, and like you say, some of it, as Michael said, you could try to balance that with fund balance. You know, to do it, but the bottom line is, um, I don't think you'll see any city saying yes, your goal should be to spend up to the levy limit. Well, I agree, there's no penalty for doing that. Most communities would prefer that they never have to run into that.
I think if you hold Dane County or like, Charlie, we've been to a lot of conferences and talked to our peers and everyone's surprised that we haven't been at our levy limit, like, they are like shocked that we're not, like, you, you shouldn't be at your levy limit because then you're cuz your increase from year over year is based on your levies, so if you're not maxing out, you're losing money that percentage that you could be getting. What?
I don't know, I had a long chat.
All the peers we've talked to are like, the standard practice that you go to your limit.
Well, then you should talk to Bill Chang because the forest is quite the opposite, they have extremely restrict rules, so they don't get they're, they'll never worry about getting to the levy limit, that's how much push they have. And I, 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 I will, I think we could easily sample what communities in Dane County have gone to referendum. And I don't think, I'll bet, I'll bet you don't even come up with twenty five percent. I mean, think, which ones that you're aware of, Middleton, Madison is going for the.
Pittsburgh, Sun Prairie is going to next year.
Well, they haven't yet.
Yep.
Pittsburgh is going to Monona and Madison and Middleton, so we know four, you know of any others?
Shortwood Hills has.
Okay, Shortwood Hills.
Yep.
And how many are there, sixty some communities in Dane County?
Well, everybody's just starting to, starting to get to that point where they need to go out, cuz they've reached.
I just wanna make it that, it's hard for me to believe that the majority of people thought we should already be going to referendum. When I don't think that many communities have gone to referendum, and I, you understand where some of them are, you know, I.
I just, I think it's gonna become more common, like you're gonna see it more and more than.
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll see, you know, I, I guess that shouldn't be a strategy of ours.
I don't think anyone said we were going to referendum, I was, I'm trying to figure out the risk profile. To figure out, do we need, do we need a hundred thousand?
Well, here, let me just, how long had we had the list where we wanted to get that police officer? Now, the only reason we haven't gotten that police officer, not that the, the needs gone away, right? It's because we're, don't have the space between the gap, right? We can't hire another officer cuz we don't have the money under the levy limit to do that, so there's one, I can tell you, right? That's the reason, the only reason why we haven't hired an officer.
Like a brand new one, not a replacement.
Right, Brian Newman, to go, so we have twenty four seven covered.
I follow.
When we hit fifty five hundred, which is a ways away, we have to go to twenty four seven covered.
It's in that far away, actually.
Well, I'm just, I.
The next sentence is probably.
I don't know, well, it depends on what happens, but what I'm saying is, that's a reason, right? It kills your future growth, here's another thing we should be planning for, which I think. When we build, when the new uh, uh, village hall and police station come online. I think everybody here should understand there's probably gonna be an increase in operating costs. If we're at seven fifty, I can tell you it's gonna be more than seven hundred and fifty bucks. So we should be planning to get some gap there, now, we're hoping, we're hoping that the efficiencies are gonna help offset that. We're hoping that solar is gonna help offset, but we can count on more water being used, right? We're gonna have public toilets on the outside that are gonna be used, so I'm sure our water utility bill will go up. I'm guessing our gas will go up, there's no real substitute on that.
Um, that'll help you out with insurance.
Insurance, cleaning, right? So we, and that's what our group is gonna be doing right now, we've talked about it, finance is gonna look at that, so we have some idea. But to answer your question, yes, we should start building that gap. So when we get to that spot, we have the room to absorb it. So look, that would be the number one reason is for future, future growth, you need to have that, that gap. Now, we're lucky that we still have spaces and developments and one is going, so we're getting a little bit bigger gap.
The levy limit's going, yeah, the line is.
Yeah.
And that new construction.
Yeah, under new construction, but again, it's, every year it's a smaller percent because we're bigger, so even if you build the same number of homes. The percentage goes down because it's now a decidable bigger group, a bigger amount. So that would be those, the two main reasons. Any other questions?
I think that was my favorite, see that when people have listed random numbers that, I guess the rationale was what.
I guess the rationale was what I wanted to hear, and I didn't hear that at all, so that, and I, I've been doing research, looking this up, and I'm not. Giving any good advice as to what.
Oh, really?
I know, I spent two hours on Friday trying to find an argument, like, not why it's good practice to go to your levy limit, I couldn't, and I also couldn't find. Any evidence, people are like, oh, you need to be under it, so.
I just think it's as simple as your household budget, you don't wanna be right up against it all the time, whether it's an emergency, whether you're saving to do something. Fund or invest in your home, I just, I think it's wise to have a buffer.
Well, right, but I think typically there's like recommendations for what percent you should have set aside, and what, you know, compared to your. Income and how much you should be setting aside, I couldn't find that for this, like, I want to know what is, what is the research showing? Leads to a successful village, like, what, what's out there, not just people saying, ah, this amount.
And we're all over the board, so I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I thought there was a really good article um from the League Magazine. I don't know if that was a year or two year, a role that they did a nice job on talking about that.
I remember that, actually, yeah, yeah, a couple years ago.
You're not gonna find someone to say like, like we do for our emergency fund, where we say it's twenty percent. You can't do that, what you have to do is look at basically the future.
Right.
And where you wanna go. Right, because, um, again, it's, you know, I would love to get us. You know, over a hundred thousand, then we could hire an officer, right? I don't think that's realistic necessarily, but, you know, if the goal is to hire another officer, so we have, because we think. The community needs it and we want twenty-four seven coverage, the only way of doing it is to get that extra officer. So then you gotta plan for that, how are we gonna get there? Now, you don't do it all in one year, but you could say for the next three years, we're gonna try to swirl away thirty-three thousand bucks to get that. So the first year it's thirty-three thousand, the next year it's sixty-six thousand, the next year it's ninety-nine thousand, and now you'll be able to do it. It it's a planning process, so the whole thing of going up to the limit, that doesn't. I think that shortsighted. And we definitely, unless it's a change, we definitely need to get a cush and. We will be getting the number to you hopefully by spring. Uh, next year on what we think is gonna be the operating part of the new village hall, police station. And that's something we need to start, we've got about two years. And that'll be this, and any of these major projects that we're talking about, the pool, you're gonna have to look at the same thing. Alright, anything else?
Are these the only budget topics that we're limited to tonight, or, like, because we don't have future agenda.
No, cuz it's.
I didn't put it cuz it's a special meeting. I was just gonna ask you about the capital funding for the engineering, really, keep you.
Well, we'll have, we'll talk about that in November when the capital budget comes up, because. There's, there's other things that's gonna happen with that, it's not just that, it's a thing that I'm gonna bring up too, so that.
I guess, this we can choose.
Yeah, no, this will be, this is the one that will be uh, that will be talked about, I believe, right? All the funds are gonna be, yeah.
Hopefully it's our last budget maybe.
Yeah, so you're gonna have to hold off on that.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah, there's no, um. That, that, we don't have to put down as a future, that is the, I don't.
But anything wage and benefits budget is fair.
Yeah, you, yeah, you could, if there's something on here, then. Alright, hearing that thing, uh, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move to adjourn, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all the same.